All right, let's bring to order this April 6th Regular Newton Falls Council Meeting. If you could stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You can stay standing, you got a pastor?
Pastor Roll, could you present a prayer, please?
Praying for everybody present, let us pray. Dear heavenly Father, Lord, be come and approach your throne of grace and mercy, Lord. And I pray for everyone that's affected by this virus that's going on, Lord. I pray that you would touch them and give your healing power to them, Lord. And I think about Second Chronicles 7:14 where you say, "If my people, which are called by my name, shall humble themselves and pray, and seek my face, and turn from their wicked ways, then I will hear from heaven, and I will forgive their sin and heal their land, Lord." And I thank you, Lord, that you tell us to come to you and pray without cease, Lord, and how you invite us into your presence. And I just pray that you would be with the council, Lord God, that you would give them wisdom in God's light, Lord, and direct their path. And I thank you and I praise you that we have a city manager and a mayor who value your word and value prayer, and we just come before you and leave everything at your feet. And I pray this in your holy name, in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
All right. Okay, Roll call?
Wardell?
Here.
Braymire?
Here.
Svet?
Here.
Alverini?
Here.
Do we have a presentation?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I want to make a very brief presentation, and that is that I ask everybody, have your full say tonight, but it's important for our health that we be about our business tonight, and for the protection of our own families, conduct the business thoroughly but succinctly so that we can move on, conduct the business of this meeting, and then get back to the safety of our homes. In that regard, it has come to my attention that on the AMI meters, our ability to have people go into homes in order to change out those meters, Mr. Chairman, is ill-advised. And therefore, for that reason, I would ask at this time for a motion to table item 8-1 and 9-2, which is the AMI meters, to the date of June 1st, 2020, and hopefully, we're beyond the coronavirus activity. But I'd ask for someone to make a motion in that regard.
I think Houseman Svet actually made the motion, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, so Mr. Svet made a motion?
Yes.
Do we have a second on that? Okay.
It's a table.
Table which one?
The meters.
Public hearing number one?
The one about the meters?
The meters.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, Roll call?
Braymire? Yes, Feria?
Yes.
Svet?
Yes.
Alverini?
Yes.
All right, reports, Mayor's report, I just got a couple things here that I did a webinar the other day for-
Mr. Mayor, excuse me, public comments?
Okay, missed that, that's right. Public comments.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, give me a minute and I'll dial up our first commentator.
Okay, and just a reminder to individuals that are in the room here to turn your cellphones either off or put them on silent, and public comments, your name and your address, three minutes, and agenda items only.
Hello, David?
Yes, Mr. Crop, we're at the public comments section of the meeting, and you are live on the record. The floor is yours.
Excellent, thank you, sir, I appreciate that. I would like to say, first of all, I have been watching since the meeting began, and I would like to say that I'm very pleased that the 8-1 and 9-2 have both been tabled, so I thank you all for that, and I hope that we can have some more discussions about that moving forward, regardless of just the current coronavirus situation. But I also want to touch on the new business as far as ordinance 2020-11. As far as the Treasury Investment, transferring $462,000 to the general fund, I think that's ill-advised. Personally, I think there should be a Corona Fund, or something along those lines, where it's not put into a general fund, and I think it should be monitored heavily, and I think that having your purchases made and then having them recorded 30 days later, or within 30 days, I honestly personally don't think that's good enough. I think there needs to be more oversight. And I'd also like to find out, or I have questions as far as when the Treasury Investment Board, if there was ever a meeting of the Treasury Investment Board, if this was ever discussed or talked about whatsoever. I have not seen any kind of minutes or anything from the Treasury Investment Board, so if anybody could get some insight on that, that would be fantastic. And I'm also curious about 10-4, which is the motion to acknowledge a waiver of conflict of interest. Now, I'm curious about this, as far as the relationship that the City of Newton Falls has with Mr. DeCristofaro. He is a felon, he's a convicted felon, charged and pled guilty for theft, and also conflict of interest, conveniently enough.
He is not a convicted felon, Mr. Crop.
I'm sorry, is my time up?
Hello?
I heard a gavel, I can't, I don't know what's going on.
Yeah, I was gonna say, there was a point of order called for that he's not a convicted felon.
I'm literally reading an article on 21WFMJ from July 26, 2011, at 5:12 PM. David DeCristofaro pled guilty to theft, a felony, and conflict of interest, and Mr. Mayor. So unless this article on 21WFMJ is incorrect, I apologize, if that's not accurate, then I apologize to me-
Yeah, that's been-
I'm literally reading an article on 21WFMJ-
And he wouldn't be able to run for office-
And that was in 2011. So he pled guilty to a theft felony and conflict of interest, which now we're trying to get a waiver of conflict of interest. I think that's an absolutely terrible idea, and I think that's an awful, awful look. And if we can't handle business and economic development on our own, we don't need to have felons coming and do that for us. So I will end my part of the comments section there, and I look forward to speaking at the second comments section. Thank you.
Next speaker, Mr. Chairman, is Katie Carl. Yes, Katie Carl, you are now in the public comments section, you are live and on the air, and you have the floor.
Thank you very much. I hope this finds everyone well, and a couple things about tonight's agenda that I was concerned about. Number one, the transfer of funds from the Treasury Investment, I do have some concerns. I know that we have to keep a certain balance, so my concern is, are we maintaining the balance that we need for emergency, the emergency position that is mandated by the government? Number one is my question. If you could answer that, that would be wonderful. Is this going to be, I read the description of the ordinance, so I'm going to assume that, I'm sorry, I'm talking about ordinance 2020-11, the authorizing the transfer of funds. Is this going to be monitored and only used for the emergency? Who is going to determine that? Just the city manager, the mayor, if you're going to declare a state of emergency, along with the city manager? You know, some of those things people need to know, want to know. And some of our businesses have already closed, maybe just temporarily, and are having an issue, which you said this morning, Mr. Lynch, they're not able to get the loans and get the help that is needed. I posted, from your information, Mr. Lynch, I posted to help some people. They need the help. Please, can you repeat what you said this morning on your update for the coronavirus? Since you're gonna have the emergency declaration tonight, which is on the agenda, can you please let people know where they can go to get the help, especially our businesses? They need our help, everybody's help, to be safe and to also exist. Thank you. Bye.
Thank you, Ms. Carl. That's all we have, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, reports, Mayor's report, I just got a couple small items. First off, I was a part of a webinar for our annual ethics class, so I have that squared away, that we're called to do. And secondly, with this coronavirus, certain regulations and steps that we do, that we want to be responsible. But when I pastored a church, something that I often said is that the enemy is not afraid of a large church, but hell itself trembles over a united church. And that's something that I would ask of our citizens, that friends, that we cannot let this virus divide us up. You know, there's a lot of that that I see going on right now, that I would ask that we not let our hearts lose the tenderness and the kindness that we have for each other that really defines this community, and that we stay united, and that we will get through this together. And that's all I have. Council members? Can we start off with Ms. Braymire, do you have anything?
I just have to say that the parking wrecks and the planning and zoning has been canceled until further notice.
Okay.
That's all I have.
How fitting is that?
Anything else, Ms. Braymire, that's it then?
No, that's all.
Okay, Mr. Bariak, did you have anything?
I have no reports right now.
Okay, Mr. Wardell?
Yeah, just a few things there. We're doing some work on the annexation documents with our legal counsel, we had a few things that we needed to do with that. I did attend a Trumbull County EMA meeting, where they were preparing to do a lot of things here and work with our police and fire departments, very, very good meeting with all the elected officials that are from the townships and the communities. Attended a fire board meeting, spent quite a few hours listening to webinars and conferences from the Ohio Melissa Bailey GAMP, the Mayor's Association, the White House Elected Officials' Conference. But I think the most important thing was listening to the OML and the AMP conferences, and how our city, our community relates to other communities in Ohio. And we kind of set the standard for our last meeting, because a lot of the communities don't televise their council meetings. And I think the procedures and the process that we went through, I talked about that with AMP and with the OML, and they've caught up. Some other communities are doing a lot of things different, and I think that we're all doing kind of the same thing, but we're all doing it differently. And it's just nice to sit and listen to all these different communities talk about what they're doing, and I talk about what we're doing, and it's a good exchange of communication. Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you. Mr. Alverini?
Mr. Mayor, we did, Mr. Crop, have a question about the Treasury Investment Board. We did meet, I believe, last week, and we did discuss these topics in regards to the Treasury Investment Board, so-
Terry, could you speak to the microphone? I'm having trouble hearing you.
We did, can you hear me, David?
The microphones only go to the television audience, Mr. Bariak. Him getting close to the mic will not help you hear him any better.
Okay, well, he had his head turned towards Kathy, I can't hear him.
End of report.
Okay, Mr. Svet?
Excuse me, am I allowed to question the Treasury Investment Board about the meeting?
No, not yet.
Did you have something, Mr. Svet?
No report.
Okay, thank you. Finance Director, Ms. Musser.
Anna, you're up to bat.
Okay, good evening. First of all, I would like to thank all of you in the City of Newton Falls for your kindness with my family, and I really appreciate everyone and all the cards and everything. I would like to give the recognition to my staff for stepping up the plate and doing everything that's needed. And with the COVID-19, my staff is working on an alternating schedule, and we just want everyone to be safe and keep healthy. Please make sure, I want to know again, that the annex building is closed to the public. If you have any concerns, need a call, you can call the utility line or us at 330-872-1010. Please make sure you can drop off your payments outside of our building, and that's all I have to report.
All right. Okay, Mr. Fritz, our law director?
Thank you, sir. I have one piece of information I need to clarify. It's kind of old news, but it's been posted on Facebook about three weeks ago regarding the election situation. And what was, oftentimes, people put on Facebook, I do what I want to do, and I don't care if they have their opinions, but there's something factual that they put on there that was totally a lie. They indicated that the city clerk, the city manager, and myself did not do our jobs in making sure that the language of the ballot was correct in advance. We don't, they don't send it to us. It's not our job to make sure that language is proper. We found out after the fact it was printed wrong, and then we responded as the city should, to give, as courtesy to the Board of Elections, let them know. What's extremely disappointing is, I immediately called the person that posted it on Facebook, had a conversation with that person, and indicated what the facts were, and they said, they assured me, they would either take it down or make a response to it. If they did, I, my friend didn't see it a couple days ago when they looked, so I want to make sure the city out there, the other citizens, know that that Facebook post is factually wrong. The city manager, the city clerk, and myself are not given advance notice of the language on the ballot before it goes there. Therefore, we can't fix it in advance. This is clearly an issue with the Board of Elections and Board of Elections only. I want to make sure it's clear to everybody. If anybody has any questions about that, they can ask me now or later if they have any specific questions. That's all I have to report, sir.
Okay, thank you. Mr. City Manager?
Well, wait a minute, about questions for the law director?
He can ask if you have any questions.
I didn't hear him, it's hard to hear. I have a question, Mr. Fritz.
Yes, sir.
The 10th of January is when your letter went down to the board, wasn't it?
I don't know.
Oh, you don't know?
10th of March.
10th of March!
Huh?
10th of March, sir.
10th of March. We had a meeting the 15th. How come council wasn't advised by you, either you or the city manager, that we had a little discrepancy? What was wrong with letting Sharon it with us?
That would be premature. It was out of my hands, I was waiting for the Board of Elections, who at the time was contacting the Secretary of State to determine what they were gonna do. All I would have said to you is, it's a mess. I wouldn't have been able to fix it or give you any real information. And you couldn't do anything about it. It's not council's duty to take care of it, nor is it mine. We just showed them the error and left it to the Board of Elections take care of it. I came to tell you, if I would have told you something that day, now we have, where they closed down the Board of Elections directly, and they're gonna change the rules again. It's up to them to put the election rules in place, not the City of Newton Falls. So I had nothing to tell you, other than it was wrong, and they're working on it. I was gonna wait till they finished and gave me some solution before I reported to council.
Okay, anything else? Mr. Lynch, City Manager Report?
Yes, ladies and gentlemen, as you know, the AMI meters have now been put off for further discussion sometime in June, and the other pending financial matter, apart from the transfer ordinance tonight, is the matter regarding the church. And the matter regarding the church is such that I've been talking to the real estate, our agents have been talking to the real estate agent representing the church, and my anticipation is, we will not be writing a big $250,000 check on May 3. I'm asking them to have us merely put down a larger deposit, probably in the neighborhood of $50,000, and then have the $200,000 that remains not paid until November 3. I just think it's judicious to pull our horns in a little bit and see where this coronavirus takes us. So my anticipation is that we will be moving forward with the church, but that we won't be paying for it until sometime in November. They may in fact allow us to have possession sometime in May, but ownership wouldn't occur until sometime in November when that payment is made. The second item is that I want everybody to know that we had all the buildings of the city electrostatically sanitized. That took place Sunday yesterday, and that's the second time this building's been done, and the first time for the other buildings that's been done in order to make sure we protect all the people that are essential, that still have to go to work. The next item, as it relates to that, is that we are going on separate shifts now. The state has recommended that our employees not all be together in the same building at the same time. So bear with us, because we will have half of our employees working in electric, and half our employees working in water, in water distribution and streets, one week on, one week off, very similar to the way some fire departments do for that reason. And last but not least, every morning at 7:30 approximately, I will be presenting a live video briefing on YouTube and on Spectrum Channel 1023, and also on Facebook, so that we have a local briefing, very similar to what the governor and the president are doing. The only thing I ask people to understand is that the authority of the State of Ohio when it comes to health is the Director of Health of the State of Ohio, Amy Acton. So what I'm asking you to do is pay attention to these briefings, and, but realize the fact that the ultimate authority is the state. There are a number of things on a local basis you need to know, and I, these briefings are only 15 minutes each, but I think they will be very helpful. In that regard, I'm asking everybody to reemphasize to the citizenry to please sign up for code red. We are in an enviable position, because we had the wisdom a few months ago to create a code-red system in Newton Falls. Very few communities in Ohio have code red. It allows you to be notified on your cellphone by text, on your cellphone by voice, on your hardline phone by voice, and by email if there's an emergency situation or an emergency message. There may be emergency messages related to the coronavirus that we have to get to right away. So register, we've paid for this system. Now you, as a citizen, avail yourself of it. Very few citizens in this state have this, and here's how you do it. You go to unsolve.com/register. It won't cost you a penny, but it may save your life. Unsolve.com/register, and you'll have that opportunity. And that's my report for the time being. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Any discussion on the City Manager's report? Okay, if not, do we have any changes to tonight's agenda?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I'd like to add a number six under new business for the Trumbull County EMA.
Excuse me, what's that, Mr. Wardell?
Trumbull County EMA, the Emergency Management Association.
Trumbull County EMA?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, is that it then?
Mr. Chairman, I also have a request on the agenda.
Okay.
There's a motion related to a waiver for the purpose of Mr. DeCristofaro. I've been having a dialogue over the last few days with Councilman Svet, who has asked me some relevant questions that can only be resolved by the law director, and therefore, I would ask that matter be pulled. If we need to place it back on a future agenda, we will do so, but I'm asking you to pull that.
Okay, which one was that?
That is number 10, new business, number four.
Okay, do we need a motion to pull that, or?
Actually, I don't know, Mr. Law Director. It was made at my behest, so my presumption is, as the sponsor, so to speak, I can be the puller as well.
That's correct.
Okay. No discussion, nothing, it's just pulled?
Just pulled.
Okay. All right, any other changes to the agenda? Okay, if not, approval of the previous minutes for March 16?
Seven.
Roll call?
Feria?
Yes.
Svet?
Yeah.
Alverini?
Yes.
Wardell?
Yes.
Braymire?
All right. Public hearings?
That's been, that's been a new public hearing, sir.
It's tabled.
It's been tabled, we don't need that public hearing.
Okay. Unfinished business?
It would be ordinance 2020-08, which is tabled till now.
So I have to make a motion to take it off the table?
Or it's gone.
Okay, make a motion to take this ordinance, 2020-08, off the, or make a motion to take it off the table for discussion? Do we have somebody make a motion? Okay, going once, gone twice, I guess it's gone. Okay, the next ordinance?
2020-11, ordinance authorizing a transfer of funds from the Treasury Investment Board to the general fund for coronavirus-related urgent activities and declaring an emergency.
Some of it.
Okay, any discussion on that?
Is Anna there?
Yeah, Anna's here. The finance director is available, Your Honor.
Okay, do we have any discussion on this motion? Okay.
Yeah.
Anna, can you, can you, can you hear the motion?
Run the transfer, run the transfer, go ahead.
Transfer of the investment comes, okay. The purpose of this ordinance is to transfer funds from the Treasury Investment Board money to the general fund for two purposes, to basically deal with the coronavirus-related expenses and help us deal with the loss of revenue in the general fund. Now, obviously, we have a loss of revenue in the general fund, but we're, overall, we're very fiscally sound and we're solvent. We have $8 million from the city, and this just helps us to ensure, in case of emergency, if we need to hire additional police to keep us safe, and to make sure we have our payroll needs and everything. So overall, this is to help us to get through probably the next couple of months dealing with this coronavirus. Again, we're very solvent, we're very fiscally sound, and this is to help us through the next couple of months.
Okay, discussion?
Yeah, I just want to add to that, Mr. Mayor, that we've been fiscally conservative the last six or seven years, that I've had the opportunity to be on the TIB board with everybody else. I think our team has done a great job. Jim, I can't think of his last name.
Feria.
He's done, he's done an outstanding job. He's kept us surprised of everything that's going on in the marketplace. That, us having money is just a testament of a total teamwork from everybody involved. So I appreciate Jim's work and Anna's work as well, and also your predecessor Tracy and Mr. Haney too, so.
Okay, anybody else?
Yeah.
Mr. Bariak?
First of all, I'm not gonna vote for this tonight for one reason. If it was just to deal with the coronavirus, that'd be one issue, and second of all, I don't want to go on into the general fund. And hopefully, it'll get transferred back. Well, if you need the money, we could set up an emergency meeting in 10 hours, and we give them all the money they want if it's an emergency. I don't know where the money's going, I don't even know how much the payroll, how much we have to make payroll. I heard we have enough to make payroll for a while, this is a temporary situation, and I'm not gonna give no more, no more money out that should be used to pay our bills we're already short. And I don't know how we got this short, you're gonna have to tell me how we got this short all of a sudden. That's, I don't know anything about it, so I'm not voting for it tonight, no way.
Okay, any other comments or discussion?
Yeah, I'd like to be heard on it, Mr. Chairman. First thing I want to say is that I respect the councilman's comments, Councilman Bariak, and you've called me in the last two weeks regarding this ordinance, regarding, because I sent an email to the members of council, my gosh, I think three weeks ago, saying something like this might be coming down the pike. And as it relates to that, I don't know, you've probably called me about 25 times in the last 10 days or so, so I respect your passion. As the finance director indicated, we are not short. We are not short. But the problem is, are we prepared? I want us to be prepared. Tomorrow, it might be incumbent upon me to get out ahead of an issue that develops tomorrow and order COTS to set up a temporary field hospital. Or maybe I have to order a few thousand of these N95 masks, because our own citizens are in need of it. Maybe I need to add additional police- citizens are in need of it. Maybe I need to add additional police to deal with circumstances that we don't want to go beyond our control, and I want to be prepared. Now, the other thing that the Finance Director mentioned, and this is important, no, we're not short, but we have two main sources of revenue for the General Fund, and you know that. We have a 1% income tax, and it's a payroll tax. In Newton Falls, I'm anticipating that that payroll is going to dwindle down to a very small amount in our town, and it's not the fault of our citizens. The state government has ordered that they stay home and not go to work unless they're in essential service. So we're not getting that money. The second main source of revenue is our traffic tickets. We are taking a more diminished attitude towards traffic stops. Why is that? Because I don't want my police interacting with other humans face-to-face on the road. It's not safe and it's not healthy. As a result of that, I'm expecting that our General Fund revenue, based on those two items, is going to go through a diminution, maybe even a collapse. Now, if that happens, the revenue source that pays our police officer, which is the General Fund, will be diminished. So I'm asking you to vote yes on this tonight, so you can look the policeman in the eye and say, "I've got you covered." I do have to go back to the council for a report if we use these funds, and I'll itemize that. But look around this room, Councilman. People are wearing masks. We have only one representative of the media here, and we're taking the temperature of every single person that comes in this building. The judge has issued a special order that no one comes in the building unless they have had their temperature taken, and it registers at 100 degrees or below, and that they are not showing any symptoms. Things have changed very, very quickly. Now, you indicated we call an emergency meeting in 10 hours. If you become sick with coronavirus, you can't participate in the meeting, and neither can Councilman Alberini, or anybody else that becomes so ill they cannot effectively and healthily participate. I share your concerns. I just want to act responsibly and be prepared. Now, by the way, there have been a lot of Facebook posts that say, "Well, what's the money for?" For God's sake, I don't know what thing is coming down the pike tomorrow, or Wednesday, or Thursday, or Friday, or Saturday. But let's protect every man, woman, and child in Newton Falls to make sure that at a moment's notice, not 10 hours' delay, at a moment's notice, we can acquire those things that we need to. If it becomes a very difficult situation, every municipality in Ohio is going to go scrambling for those things they need to protect their citizens. Right now, the masks that some of you are wearing are N95 masks. They are precious jewels that hospital workers are using over and over again, and our first responders are having to use over and over and over again. I understand the things that you're expressing, but the President of the United States declared that we're in a state of emergency. The governor declared that we're in a state of emergency. The county commissioners just declared that we're in a state of emergency, and later on in this agenda, Newton Falls will do the same thing. Everybody here knows how to reach me. Everybody in this room gets phone calls from me all the time. Councilman Baria, you and I should just have a single line just between you and me because we have so many exchanges. Please let me finish, Councilman. Go ahead. So, we have these lines of communication, and this council, all five of you that are voters, and the mayor who votes in the case of a tie, are saddled to the responsibility of being the representative of the people and to keep me in line. Heck, if I spend the money wrong, you can fire me. That's not the point, though. We have to be ready. And my fear is that without passage, this won't be ready. Now, remember what the Finance Director said. We are fiscally sound, and the reserves are significant. They're significant. And all we're doing to this particular case, how many people have been going around town buying canned goods, buying all kinds of things, toilet paper? I saw a, a post on Facebook saying, "Everybody stock up even additionally," because we might get to the point where we've got to make sure that people stay in their homes 24/7 and can't even leave to go get their medicine, and can't even leave to go for a fast food, a drive-through. I don't know. I don't know if that's coming, and neither do you. We must be ready. This money that would be available to the General Fund would allow me to hire additional police if I need to at a moment's notice. We don't want to see more restrictions on our community. But if a city manager, we need, I need to determine in conjunction with the state that we need to go to 24-hour-a-day, 7-day-a-week lockdown, as a matter of life and death, I can assure you, I'm going to put those police on the streets and spend that additional money. Because sometimes, there's no tomorrow. I hope it never gets that way, but the, the best way to deal with issues in life is to be prepared. My wife always says this phrase, "Hope for the best, but prepare for the worst." And I, I, I hope that I convince you to change your view on this particular issue.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Just a couple of things. This is one of the issues across the state of Ohio that a lot of the communities are facing, is putting some funds aside for an emergency right now. That's what they're doing. And one of the things that our investment counselor told us is that, you know, Newton Falls is a very small community compared to a lot of others, but our investments are excellent compared to many. And someday down the road, if things would get any worse, and we hope they don't, we stand to be in a better shape than a lot of people do because of our previous investments and what we're doing. I was very happy to hear that from our, you know, our counselor, because that, you wonder, you know, how things are going, but he said that we're in really good shape, and there are other communities and townships that they're not in good shape, and if something seriously happens, there's going to be a lot of, a lot of heartache. So, you know, you're the real deal, I heard, so go for it, and, you know, we trust your judgment, obviously.
Okay, any, any other discussion? Mr. Baria.
I'd like the public to know tonight, especially all the employees, that there's no way in God's earth would I ever let, they'd have to carry me up here in a stretcher and I'd still be here. This, all I'm trying to say is we have to practice fiscal restraint now, and if they come to me in 10 hours, and it's a justifiable expense, we could pull more out. But I'm not, this goes into the General Fund. There's no promise that it's coming back. I don't know where the money's going. I don't know. And look, all I can say is this to the public. If we're short of money all of a sudden, why? We bought a $250,000 church, everything, our investments did so well, and now all of a sudden, we can't, we can't weather two months? Well, then something's wrong here. And I still want to.
Point of order. I don't remember anybody saying we were short of money. I'm not listening.
We're on the floor, sir.
I said, "Point of order, sir," and I said, I don't remember anybody saying that we were short of money at this point in time. Where this is geared to an emergency that we're looking at. Nobody said we were going to do anything with it until we need to.
Continue, Mr. Baria.
All I'm saying is that we've got 10 hours, an emergency meeting only takes three of us to be here, God willing. We're all, we're up here tonight. We're up here tonight, really, and maybe we shouldn't even be here tonight. I don't know. But I'm here. I want the public to know that I'll not shirk my responsibility. And Mrs. Braymire, God, God help her. She has, she has physical problems. That woman's here tonight. She, she loves the people in this community, too. So they don't have to worry about if they, we need, the police or anybody needs the money, that we won't give it to them, on my vote.
Mr. Alberini?
Call the vote.
Do we have any other, do you have any, Mrs. Braymire? Okay, roll call.
Savet.
Yeah.
Alberini.
Yes.
Waddell.
Yes.
Braymire.
Yeah.
Baria.
No.
Pass.
I need to do a second reading.
Oh, we need a second reading, too? Okay.
Ordinance authorizing transfer of funds from the Treasury Investment Board to the General Fund for coronavirus-related urgent activities and declaring an emergency.
So move.
Second.
Any more comments on the second reading? If not, then we need a roll call for that, then?
Alberini?
Yes.
Waddell?
Yes.
Braymire?
Yes.
Baria?
No.
Savet?
Yes.
Pass.
Ordinance or a resolution authorizing all actions necessary to accept Northeast Ohio Public Energy Council Energize Community Grant.
So move.
Don't move.
Second, then.
He's on a time delay, isn't he? Any discussion on that?
This is just another, a grant from NOPEC that we are part of. We've used it in the past for our community. It, it's a great thing to have. I think it's about $500?
No, this one's $4,200.
This is $4,200, and it'll be used for things to be decided in the future. It's a, it's a great grant that comes from a community, an organization that we belong to, and we have people on the board.
Okay. All right, so we need a roll call for that, then?
Waddell?
Yes.
Braymire?
Yeah.
Baria?
Yes.
Savet?
Yeah.
Alberini?
Yes.
All right, pass.
Resolution declaring the city of Newton Falls in a state of emergency in order for the city manager to have necessary flexibility to address the operational impact of the public health emergency created by the COVID-19 coronavirus.
Okay, do we?
So move.
I'll be, I'll do it in a second.
Okay.
And, roll call.
Oh.
Discussion.
This is our number six, the resolution given the city manager in a state of emergency.
Number three, yes. Number three.
12-20.
Resolution 14.
14-2020.
Yeah, I have 12-20, 20.
Yeah, we took one resolution out, put another one in, and the numbers got mixed up.
Could I, could I ask the Law Director to read me Article 8, Section 3, please?
Do you want the whole thing read, sir?
Article 8, Section 3, please.
Do you want the whole thing read?
No, what I'd like to know is it, um, wait a minute, what did I have my notes here? Excuse me. It's tough to read when your glasses get fogged up.
Mrs. King, who was the second on that?
Mr. Savet.
Mr. Savet, okay.
Excuse me.
Okay.
In other words, I wanted to ask the Law Director a question. We, even though the county is in an emergency situation, we have to declare our own emergency right tonight. Is that what we're going to do?
You don't have to do anything, and the request is to have this declared emergency. Primarily, it creates a situation where some of the requirements of coming to council on an immediate basis are waived, and gives the city manager some discretion in handling emergency situations.
Well, it says here, from what I understand about that Article 8, Section 3, it gives the, it gives the city manager the power to skirt the bidding procedure and, uh, without coming to council for anything, and not having to report back to council for 30 days. Is that right?
There's no 30-day specification in it, but it does say that he has certain laws of the state of Ohio that he's not required to follow if you declare an emergency, and that is your immediate requirement to vote before he takes an action.
Yeah, well, we're, we're not in a, we are not technically, why would, the county is in a state of emergency because of federal funding, and they got fame on that, but what, it's a little bit of trickle down here. Are we, we're going to create an emergency tonight?
Mr. Chairman, may I address that? Thank you, Councilman Baria. It's a good question. In order to be eligible for some of the emergency funds that are coming down the pike ourselves directly, we have to declare our own emergency. In addition to that, Congress is moving forward with new emergency packages, as well as the state government. Before, I talked about being ready. When the pitcher throws the ball, the catcher better be ready, or else there's going to be a problem in that ballgame. We have to be ready. We have to declare our own state of emergency, so we can be a direct recipient of federal funds and state funds, and possibly even county funds. We have to be in a state of readiness to declare our own state of emergency, and don't kid yourself. If Trumbull County's in a state of emergency, Newton Falls hasn't been exempted.
Well, come there's not a timeline on this to end it.
Well, it's.
How come there's not a timeline on here? In other words, will you say it as soon as the emergency's over? Who declares the emergency to be over?
Well, Mr. Baria, Councilman, I'm sorry. If you could tell me when that emergency is going to end, I would be delighted to put that date in this.
Is it written in here until the emergency is declared over?
Well, by, by virtue of the emergency itself, I, it has to be an emergency condition. So I guess what I would say to this council, if you want to put an amendment on until dissipation of the emergency, I'd be more than happy with that. Look, folks, we have a democratic process where you're elected to keep an eye on the things that I do, and I want you to do that. I like the idea that there are bumpers along the way, because it protects all of us. But I also want to make sure that we're in a position, I don't want to give the same impassioned speech I gave about the Treasury Investment Board right now, but what I do want to do is make sure we're ready to be the recipient of funds, and I'll, I'll put it this way a little bit differently. If it turns out, in order to protect the lives of citizens, I need 5,000 N95 masks, and I receive information about a source, if I buy them now, that we'll be able to get them, and I've got two hours to make a decision. I need to be empowered to do that, and don't kid yourself. Anyone that's been watching the news saw that the 3M Company has been manufacturing all this wonderful equipment, and it didn't go to the states and hospitals that needed it. The reason it didn't go is the people that walked up with the cash got the equipment. That's why I'm asking you to make sure that you pass this measure as well. It really goes hand-in-hand in tandem with the one that you passed earlier this evening.
No. Second address.
Second, yeah.
What I want the public to understand is that this gives the city manager the right to skirt the bidding procedure on big-ticket items. This isn't like buying a couple of masks. You only write, Mr. Fritz, that he can go above the state bidding where you have to get the proper two weeks' notice and everything else, and go over $20,000 or whatever it is.
If this matter unanimously passes, that would be true, but he's also limited in what's been budgeted out. It's not he could take on additional debt to the city.
John, I'm still limited to the money that's in the budget.
That's, that is taking the council's right, that is taking council's right to give us the only power we have is to legislate the money, and what the voters elected us for, to watch the dollar bill. And I'm not trying to discredit you, Mr. Lynch, but I would like to be able to do my job as I was elected.
John, I'd love you to do your job, but if it costs one life in this city, because I can't take action, because we don't have the opportunity to do that, I'll give that family your phone number.
Okay.
Please do that.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Does the emergency not end when the governor or the president declares emergency over?
That's my view of it. I'd be happy to either represent that now, or I have got no problem having this council amend this to say exactly that. If that'll satisfy Councilman Baria, yeah, I'd be happy. I'd be fine with that.
Maybe that's just common sense. When, once somebody declares the emergency, it's all void. I think our legislation goes along with that, because there's no longer an emergency.
I would ask, if you can have a local emergency, this emergency is in place until council removes it, unless you do as the, as the city manager suggested, you put a deadline to it or attach it to that. So if you want to attach it to a state emergency, you should amend it and put it in there. Because if we can have a local emergency, it could go longer than the state has. So the state has nothing to do with this one.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I'm comfortable with an amendment that has our emergency aligned with the Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I'm comfortable with an amendment that has our emergency aligned with the state's declaration. Councilman Berriac, I'd be okay with that.
Then I would make a motion to amend this to go along with the state declaration. And when the state declaration's over, ours is over also.
Okay, first, Mr. Waddell, second, Mr. Alberini. We've had discussion on it. Roll call.
This is on the amendment?
Yes.
And what is... Could you read the amendment one more time?
To give the state declaration and when the state declaration is over, so is ours.
What was it? Please, Kathy, I'm having trouble here.
When the state's is over, ours is over also.
Okay, roll call.
Bremeyer?
Yes.
Berriac?
No.
Savet?
Yeah.
Alberini?
Yes.
Waddell?
Yes.
Pass. Okay.
Now we have to go to the motion as amended.
Your honor. Okay, I'm sorry.
Ready, Savet?
Yeah.
Berriac?
No.
Savet?
Yeah.
Alberini?
Yep.
Waddell?
Yes.
Bremeyer?
Pass.
I thought it said if one person objects, it doesn't pass, even under emergency. Mr. Fritz?
It is declared an...
Could you read that for me, sir?
It is declared an emergency, but the provision that says that he cannot...
Have the total, the total of council, everybody voting, right?
For the purposes of suspending the necessity to bid out jobs. But the motion itself still declares a state of emergency for the city.
Does it still take all the mayor and everybody to vote?
No. Mr. Bariak, I'll try this again. It says here that council may authorize a purchase of a contract involving expenditure in excess of limits as provided by the general laws of this state without advertising for bids if it determines and declares by an affirmative vote of all members that an emergency exists and set forth the nature of the emergency in its resolution or ordinance. So by not having a unanimous vote, he is still required to get bids, but that does not mean that there's not an emergency declared for the city.
I'm lost, I'm sorry.
I don't have any other way of answering it, sir. The ordinance is passed, we have a declared emergency in the city. But he has to still get bids for non-professional contracts because it was not unanimous.
So in other words, you still have to come to us for non-professional contracts?
No, it just means I have to bid it.
You'll have to go out to bid it.
If it's beyond the statutory limit, I'm still required to do the bid regardless of the emergency.
Alright, you ready, Mrs. King, for the next motion?
Yeah, motion to authorize the city manager to give a 30% discount on commercial water and electric customers for a one-month of utility bills.
Do we have somebody to make a motion?
Which one are we on?
Number five.
Thirty percent discount on commercial water and electric customers for utility bills.
Which one, Kathy? I can't hear.
Number five on a new business.
A motion to authorize the city manager to give a 30% discount to commercial?
Yes.
Is that one?
Mm-hmm. Okay, do we have somebody to make a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Mr. Bariak? Mr. Bremeyer? Okay, any discussion on it?
Mr. Chairman, as much as I would like to see this happen, I'm not sure if this is the exact right time for that. A lot of the businesses are not in, you know, are often not in operation at this point in time. You know, giving them a discount on a utility bill that, you know, is very low at this point in time because they're not in business doesn't help them at all. What I'd like to see is sometime later in the year when the businesses are all back up and running again, then we consider this and give the businesses a discount when they're all working and make it meaningful. Right now, it's not meaningful to those that are closed. If you're, you know, your normal electric bill is six, seven, $800 when you're running the business and now it's $100 or $150 because you're auto, that 30% discount isn't really going to help you one way or the other. But someday down the road here, when everybody's back up and running and you're back with that $800 electric bill, 30% makes a big difference. And I would like to see this proposed later in the year when our businesses are back up and running. I support our businesses. I've been doing a lot of carryout, but I think this is something we need to do for our businesses later. Right now, you know, the discount we have for the residents, I think that's very beneficial because all the kids are home, they're using more water, sewer, and electric than they normally were at this point in time. I think that's a great deal. But I don't think this benefits the businesses the way we think it should. So I would be happy to do this at a later time.
Any other discussion, Mr. Bariak?
I look at it just the opposite. They're not using a lot of electricity right now. It wouldn't cost us as much. And we're all in this together. We gave it to the residents. Some of our businesses are not going to be coming back, even 30% now on a small amount. And I would be, myself, if this passes tonight, the little bit that I contribute on my commercial property, I will donate to help feed the kids in Newton Falls. But I think that we ought to show our businesses the same respect as we do the residents. We're all in this together.
Okay, any other discussion? Mr. Alberini? Mr. Bremeyer?
Yes. When did we give the discount to the city? I mean, the people, the residents? When was that? Was it in March or was it in February?
Yes, it was for the consumption for the bill that came in in March. And we're likely to do that for the bill that comes in in April, too.
Okay, well, why can't we go back with the commercial at the same time period and give them a discount?
Yeah. May I address that, Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead.
Thank you. Councilman Bremeyer, I understand the concept you're getting at. Most of our commercial operators that are small businesses are not consumers of utilities right now. And my concern is this. I don't know how much longer we may have to extend to help the residents. There's some people that they're what I call a consolidated family. You've got the grandparents that live there and then their children and then all their grandchildren. There's seven, eight, nine, 10 people all in the same house at the same time. I don't want my hands tied behind my back that stops me from continuing the residential discount if that's what we need to do. When I was talking about the Treasury Investment Board legislation, I spoke in some pretty dramatic tones. This is a dramatic time. And I do not want to do anything that imperils our ability to help those families. But I do want to say something as relates to the motion that Councilman Berriac has made for the small businesses. We're in a no-shut-off policy right now. And I got a call from a business today and he said, I'm concerned, I'm talking about a large business, and he said to me, we're concerned about what we do with our utility bills. Will you work with us? We will work with them. Here's what I said to him. I said, look, you've got a payroll. You've got, and this is a large business, several hundred people on a payroll. If we can back off and work with you one way or another until better times are here and you can keep that payroll going, that's the most important thing. So what I'm trying to say is that we're not going to shut off people's electricity or water. They're trying to keep a business alive. So while Councilman Berriac's point is well-taken, we want to help everybody, we are internally putting in controls to work with our businesses to make sure that... And we, for example, we go into something called a payment plan. We might take the big bill that they campaign now and amortize it over the next 12 months or take two or three months and amortize it over 12 months after that. We're being very creative. We've never had to be this creative before. But again, don't shackle our ability to work with residential customers because of the fact that without electricity and water, life itself starts to dissipate.
Any other discussion? Mr. Savet? Did you say something?
The, Mr. Lynch, the 30% that was given to the residential, what number was that? And what does 30% on the commercial, what would that number look like?
Yeah, 30% on residential is about $80,000 a month. And, Madam Finance Director, maybe you can help me. I'm gonna say that on the commercial end, it's closer to about $180,000 a month. Am I right about that?
Correct.
And then with that $180,000 going out in two months, I would imagine that puts a significant decrease in the special revenue funds for those two, for the water and electric. We may have...
Yeah, it's possible.
It would be enterprise fund.
Yeah, Councilman Savet, it would certainly constitute a more meaningful threat.
Mr. Mayor, I have a comment. I agree with Councilman Waddell. Zero from zero is still zero. I think the best thing that we can do is offer the 30% discount to our businesses and companies here in town at peak capacity when they're working the most. So if their peak usage is in July or August or things like that, I think that 30% would have more of an impact when they're using the most electricity. Obviously, right now, it's reduced. I understand that. But again, zero from zero, zero. I think the best way to help these folks is when they're really up and running and have a little bit of extra cash to go into their payrolls and things like that. So.
Any other discussion? If not, roll call.
Savet?
Yes.
No.
Alberini?
No.
Waddell?
No.
Bremeyer?
Yes.
Berriac?
Yes.
What was it? Three no, two yes?
Three no's, two yes.
Okay, motion fails. Alright, public comments?
There's number six in there.
That's right.
The Trumbull County Emergency Management Association, which I represent our community there, provides gloves, masks, goggles, shields, gowns, and sanitizing products for our EMTs, our firefighters, our police officers. And as everybody knows, they're a little short. The Trumbull County Commissioners are allotting $10,000 for PPE and Howland Township and City of Warren are donating $1,000. And they've asked that other communities follow suit and donate $1,000 for PPE purchases for our Trumbull County Emergency Management Personnel. So I'd like to make a motion to donate $1,000 to the Trumbull County EMA.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second.
Okay, Mr. Savet, any discussion on this motion? Okay, no discussion. Roll call.
Alberini?
I'm staying.
Waddell?
Yes.
Bremeyer?
Yes.
Berriac?
Yes.
Savet?
Councilman, can you repeat that vote, please?
Yeah.
Okay, motion passes.
Hello?
Mr. Crowe, you are in the second public session. You have the floor.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate that. Ladies and gentlemen of council, I appreciate the time to speak here at the second comment section. I want to touch on a few things real quick. I really wanted to kind of talk about, I was at the last meeting, of course, as a media member, came in and after I, when I finished speaking at the second public comment section, that meeting, I was addressed by a couple of members of council. I was actually addressed by several members of council. A couple of them on camera intentionally, and one of the council members actually called me a name off camera. You can hear it in the audio. And that's never been addressed. I would like to point out that another resident actually called me a rodent, too, on the phone. And that was never addressed either. I think one of the council members actually spoke up and I appreciate that. Now, as far as everything else that's been going on here in council, you guys just declined the 30% discount for the commercial businesses. I'm curious, I'd like to know if any of that had to do with the fact that we are, Venture Plastic, one of the largest companies here in Newton Falls, actually receives their electric at about a penny over cost, if I'm not mistaken. And if we would have passed that 30% discount, we would actually be paying them to use their electric. So if anybody can speak on that, I'd really appreciate that. And also, I wanted to point out to Dave, I saw that he got pretty animated there earlier as far as the emergency funds were concerned. And I just wanted to clarify for Dave. Honestly, I think the people are just a little bit hesitant to give money to city council or anybody on city council because for the last several years, money has been completely mismanaged in an awful way. And if you drive around town and look at just some of the structures, you'll see that. You'll see the fact that, you know, Mr. Alberini likes to talk about business quite a bit, so I'm gonna give a little bit of business advice myself. When you have a business, you take the money that you have and you reinvest it back into your business. And the city should do the same thing. They have not reinvested back into themselves. I actually looked up online and found the 2014 comprehensive plan that was built and given to the city of Newton Falls. And I believe Mr. Waddell was the mayor at that point. I had been the mayor for about four years and Mr. Alberini was also a council member at the time. So Mr. Alberini had mentioned that they didn't have any kind of game plan and they just kind of went into this, you know, from ground zero. That was completely inaccurate. You guys had a 227-page plan that's completely laid out and you guys have done nothing, nothing with that plan whatsoever. You have not implemented any of the goals. You haven't done anything. All the parks are falling apart. They're even worse now. The community center's been closed. And now we have $8 million in an account, which is great. We could transfer almost $500,000 to our general fund that Mr. Lynch is gonna be able to use at his discretion. But the reason we have all that money is because you guys haven't spent it on anything in town. You guys haven't upgraded or updated anything. You've closed buildings and now you've purchased a building for yourselves instead of taking care of the things that was actually recommended to the city. I've also made a request to find out who requested that report, that progress report or that comprehensive plan and how much it costs. I have not got that information back yet. So I just wanted to kind of talk about that. And also, one last thing, Mr. Alberini spoke at the end of the last meeting about the corporate apparel.
I'll finish this.
Or something along the lines. He spoke.
Okay, Mr. Crowe, finish that.
Mr. Crowe, Mr. Crowe, hold on a second. The mayor wants to address you briefly.
Just finish up the point that you're on, Mr. Crowe, because the time is up.
Point of order, Mr. Mayor. My apparel does not have anything to do with the city of Newton Falls. Point of order, Mr. Crowe, my apparel, what I wear does not have anything to do with Newton Falls. If you want to talk to me about what I wear or buy me some clothes or whatever, you can do that. But this is, we're discussing the business of Newton Falls. Goodness gracious.
Do I still have the floor? Am I still allowed to speak or am I not allowed to speak?
No, the time is up, sir.
Oh, I thought my, I don't get to reclaim my time?
It was up before he started it.
No, the time is up. The timer went off.
Oh, okay. I just, okay, thank you. I appreciate it. And city council is not a place to advertise your business. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Appreciate it.
Individual there, Mr. Lynch?
We received a request from Katie Carl to participate in the meeting, Mr. Chairman.
Hello?
Katie Carl, you have the floor.
Okay, thank you very much. And I'm glad to see that you did, in fact, pass the emergency. And also, one of the questions that was not answered for me, if you can, Ms. Mossen did not answer it either, are we still, I know we're not in shape in any kind of a dire situation, but are we still okay in our treasury investment fund in case of an emergency? Can you please state that for people? Because we do have to have a mandated amount in our fund in case of any type of emergency situation to replace, that's why we do have the treasury investment, that's why it was set up in the first place years ago, in order to fix or replace anything for our utilities. That's how it was explained to me in a nutshell, and that's why we had to have those. So that's something, a rule of thumb, that maybe people can understand. That's why that's there. It's not extra money to spend that we can just transfer over, as someone just said on the phone. That's not extra money. That's why it has to be and it's mandated to be so that people can understand. It's just not something we can pull out of thin air. And maybe that's easier for everyone to understand. Thank you to all of... Thank you to all of the businesses and the councilmen for all of the work that's being done for this emergency and for helping our business. Please, can you continue to help the businesses? Help them get loans to stay afloat and stay on their feet? And that's all I would ask of everybody. And to work together and not, not be ignorant with the people that are still working and that are considered essential businesses. Because it's hard enough for some of them to have to go to work, even when they're afraid, but they need their jobs and they need to be there. Please, try and have patience with other people. God bless, take care, everyone. Bye.
Thank you. Do we have anybody else, Mr. Lynch?
That's it, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, closing remarks, I don't have anything. Um, city manager?
Uh, I have nothing further, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, council, Ms. Braemeyer?
I have nothing.
Nothing, Mr. Bariak?
Yes, uh, I'm not trying to stick up for any of the council people because they all stand on their own merit, but I've watched that council meeting five times, and, uh, I haven't heard, uh, somebody call somebody, uh, that A three-letter word, A S S or whatever it is. But I did hear somebody called a rodent and crapper. Now, I'm going to be honest about it, if I would have heard the councilman say it, councilperson said, I would have said so. Listen to the meeting again. Now, to get past that, everybody in this community knows that we're Newton Falls, and we're trying to strive and get ahead, and I've been here all my life. Almost 71 years. And my only goal is, is just to see the community do better. But I don't think that we can change Newton Falls into New York City in one year, nor do I think we have the funds to do it with. One day, the pot's going to run empty, and then it'll be that way. The other thing I'd like to say tonight is this, I've run a business a long time. I, when I'm working well, and things are going real good, I really don't need a break. I need a break when I, when things are tough. I need a break when things are tough, and that's the only reason why with the restaurants closed down and everything, every nickel and dime matters. So I, I understand a bigger, a bigger cut would be when you're open, but when would you need it more? Now or then? And I want to hold this council to the fire, that when we are back up and running, I want to see them get that 30% since they wouldn't give them tonight. Other than that, I'm, uh, I appreciate everything and, uh, uh, I'm sorry I didn't, I'm not trying to call anybody out, Mr. Crop, I'm not trying to call you out. I just can't see that, and I've heard that myself, and, uh, I'm sorry that, that some of that language was used, but I do not feel that the one councilwoman said that. Maybe I, I do not hear that well, but I, I listened to it over and over and over. Thank you.
Before we go to, uh, Mr. Waddell, I, I agree with Mr. Bariak, I didn't hear anything said, and I would have addressed it. I said when we're bringing civility to this community and this council, it's not just the individuals sitting behind the desk here, it goes for the individuals on the other side as well. And, uh, we do, especially in this time here, need to, uh, uh, work together and have some patience with each other and not be looking to, uh, ding each other. And, um, as I said, I didn't hear, if I had heard anything, I would have, uh, said something myself. Mr. Waddell, did you have anything?
I'll just say, I said this during my part on the, uh, discount. I, I hope that our businesses and all the, everything is back to normal here, pretty darn soon. But, uh, I will be willing to make that motion as soon as practical to, uh, help our businesses when things are getting back up there. I, I'd like to see them give the discount like everybody else, and I would be absolutely willing to make that motion.
Okay. Mr. Alberini?
Uh, thank you. Um, Mr. Crop said earlier, uh, tonight, uh, when he had called in that Mr. DeChristopher was a felon. Apparently, Mr. DeChristopher was listening in to Facebook and got a response from Mr. DeChristopher, and his record has been completely expunged. And your record, in order to run for public office, as the mayor said early, your record has to be expunged, so Mr. DeChristopher was not a felon. It probably would be a good idea, Mr. Crop, to let Mr. DeChristopher know that you apologize or are going to apologize to him. I think that would be the professional thing to do. When you drag someone's name in a public venue like that, attached with that word felon, then you may suffer other consequences, which I don't want to go into, but, um, I think it'd be best for you to contact Mr. DeChristopher and extend a hand of friendship. That's the first thing. Second thing, um, I heard in your, in your remarks, and, you know, you're a very good talker, you talk really, really, really fast. You probably are well-suited for a telemarketing position with a major company like AT&amp;T or something like, like that. But I would say this, fiscal management, um, we, we, we get it from both sides. Uh, we get complaints because we don't spend the money, we get complaints because we do spend the money, and then folks like you come up and say, "We're blowing the money, we don't know what we're doing." And, uh, I would just say this to you and your, your band of keyboard warriors, um, you know, a lot of things you say on there, I know, by the way, I seen a note on your, on the, the Newton Falls excrement page where you said I called you an A S S. Most people know that I don't curse or swear, so I don't know where that came from. I went back and listened to it, but anyway, not to lose my train of thought, um, no matter what we do financially, um, we're, we're getting criticized for it. I think our team's done a really, really, really great job. We're in a tough position right now, uh, the country's in crisis. We don't need people throwing darts or spears at council, uh, in, in being Monday morning quarterbacks. Um, but I will tell you this, I have a tendency to listen to extremely successful business people and to take advice from all sides. And one of the things, one of the things I did learn in business, uh, to you and some of the other folks listening, I have a tendency to surround myself with people who are smarter than me. And the reason I do that is because I'm limited in my capabilities such as you are. It would be, it would behoove me, um, not to tell you that if you want to grow your business, surround your people with, surround your company or your little business with smart people, and you will go somewhere, and quit wasting your time trying to make members of council look bad. Because there are 500 people that voted for Terry Alberini, I'll repeat myself, there's a thousand people that voted for Mr. Waddell, there's 500 people that voted for Mr. Bariak, and the same amount for Ms. Braemeyer. And when you, when you get on the council floor, you know, you're here to, to, to talk about council business, not criticize these people, because you're criticizing the voters of Newton Falls for voting for these people, and those are potential customers that you could have using your business. Now, I'm just telling you, um, I think that you need to change gears here a little bit, quit listening to, to some wrong people, and start getting wise counsel from people who have been around the block a few years. So to the citizens of Newton Falls, um, we're in a tough time, I apologize for the banter. You know, I'm mindful with the Psalmist David, I look to the heavens to where my help comes from, and we all need to join together in unity here. Now's not the time to criticize people and, and, and castigate people and things like that. It's really disheartening for us as a council because we all see, we all see the snippets on the Facebook pages that we get, that we're all a bunch of criminals and ax murderers. And, uh, I can honestly tell you that all of us here have the heart of the village, uh, number one. And my prayer is that all of our families here in Newton Falls stay healthy, that your children be blessed, um, that everybody be safe, and God prospers you. So thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
All right, Mr. Savet, do you have anything?
Uh, nothing at this time.
Okay, if nothing else, there's no, nothing for executive session. So do we have anybody that will make a motion to adjourn the meeting?
We aren't going to executive session?
No.
Zach said so moved, second.
Roll call?
Waddell?
Yes.
Braemeyer?
Yes.
Beria?
Yes.
Savet?
Yeah.
Alberini?
Yes.
All right. Do you adjourn?